Okay.
Good morning. Good morning. Good morning.
Morning.
Okay. Nicole, we'll go ahead and call our Commissioners Working Meeting for November 19th to order. The first thing on our agenda is the Limestone Hills Training Area airspace discussion. I guess maybe just a quick overview of what's being proposed is the Air Force and the National Guard would like to use our Limestone Hills Training Area as an aerial gunnery range and training facility. And the Air Force and National Guard will both be flying the helicopters down there to do that. The proposal is to create some restricted airspace in the training area. So there was, they did send out a letter for us to respond. We've reached out to our airport board and some of the local area pilots. And I've got their responses. And I guess I will just go ahead and read the one from our airport board that says the "The Townsend City County Airport Board has reviewed the U.S. Air Force proposal to create a restricted airspace area at the Limestone Hills Training Area, and we offer the following comments. It is not clear how far east the area goes. If the boundary goes to the river, it would be a problem because many of pilots try not to fly over Townsend. On flying downwind for runway 35, they fly south over the river. If the east boundary does not go to the river, it would not affect the Townsend Airport. We believe this area should not, or should be, an MOA and not a restricted area." There was some other inquiries that were sent. Actually, they were by my son because he does aerial application out here in this area. And he was asking for a little bit more clarification on what they were proposing. And the letter he received back said that the SUA, which is Special Use Airspace Restricted Area, would be ranging from the surface to 10,000 feet MSL, which is 5,000 feet AGL, and will be required over the entire Limestone Hills Training Area prior to the implementation of the aerial gunnery. Restricted airspace provides for exclusive use for military aircraft operations and serves to contain and segregate training and other military activities that could be hazardous to non-participating aircraft. Fort Harrison Range Control would accomplish the scheduling of use of the restricted airspace via NOTAMS, which are notices to airmen, 24 hours in advance and have specific times of operation. The times of use generally would be between 7:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m., up to seven days a week." So that gives us a little bit more information on what they're proposing as far as for the boundaries. They're saying it's going to be in the entire Limestone Hills Training Area. And it does give us an idea of what altitudes they are proposing. I did send out to everybody just a brief explanation of what a MOA or Military Operations Area is, the difference between that, a restricted area, and prohibited areas. So, and I did send out some maps. And I think, did you guys bring, did you bring yours, Mike? I don't know.
No, I didn't.
Okay.
I looked at it, but I didn't bring it.
But anyway, you know, a military operation area or MOA, we do have a couple of them in the state of Montana. One is up in northern part of Montana, one is in eastern Montana. And they're used for military aircraft to do their training. And most of the time there, the difference between that and restricted area is the live ordinance. So in MOA, they don't shoot live ordinance where they would in an aerial gunnery range, which is being proposed here. So that is kind of the difference. You can still fly through both of those areas. However, in the restricted area, you're required to call the operating authority to get permission to fly through that area. And I guess it makes sense if they're flying, if they're firing live artillery or aerial gunnery, you probably would not want to fly through that area. A prohibited area is just that. It's an area that's prohibited, that you cannot fly in or even get permission to fly through. An example of that would be like the White House or Camp David, something like that. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood the definitions and the difference between the two. I did have an opportunity to go out yesterday and meet with a lot of the local pilots, and we discussed this. They feel that they would still like it to be a MOA rather than restricted. But their feeling was that if it did have to become restricted airspace, they wanted to be sure that they had input into its boundary. Their feelings are very strong as far as for that restricted airspace going any further than north or east of the river. And I agree with that. I think that if we can keep everything on that side of the river, it should not interfere with our airport or traffic that's transitioning the area. So I guess with that, I will open it up to discussion. What are you guys thinking?
I would think that if we could get them to at least, if they have that as a restricted area to keep the boundary to the east side of the training facility, then that'll get a little further off the river.
Okay.
Or, you know, if push comes to shove, the river, I guess would be okay. What's the west boundary?
You know, in the map that they gave us, it's not very clear. And I think that actually that's probably something that we should ask them to send us a map that is really clear. Maps they give us, you know, as you can see, is just a little blob on the map. And it's not, it's not really very clear where that is. I think you're right, Mike, that on the east side, it does not go to the river. You know, for whatever reason, it seems like it shows one portion that may jump over the river. I don't know where that's at. But I think that's a reasonable request that we can make.
Would it be reasonable for requests that they have restricted airspace, but keep it within, keep it at the boundaries of the training site?
I believe that is their intention, and we will definitely, we'll make sure that that's clear.
Commissioner Hopeford, is this the same map that you're operating off of?
That is one of them, one of the ones that they sent us, yes.
So, Mike, can I have a question here?
Yep.
I notice there's a portion of it, if you look at this, at the MOA.
Yeah, mhm.
And it appears to encompass the Canyon Ferry landing strip. Do you see where this little, I'm looking here.
No, actually the...
This little slot comes out right there.
Well, this is the orange area.
No, this is the Limestone Hills Training Area.
Yeah.
But this being the MOA here, is this the Canyon Ferry landing strip? This little piece that juts out is what I'm wondering.
Yeah.
Are we going to lose access to that?
No, no, we won't. I see what you're looking at. And I think, I think that what you're looking at, Nicole, there is there's some flight pass. The two blue lines are the flight pass that would come out of Great Falls. The purple or magenta lines are the ones that are just the depicted flight pass that come out of the helicopter flight pass. So that is not restricted or airspace of any type.
Okay, so that's what they're calling the MOA?
Yeah.
Is this magenta is the overflight area?
Oh, well, that's an overflight area, awareness area. That's different from a military operations area.
Okay, that's the only question I have.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we're not restricting access to the Canyon Ferry landing strip. I know they use it frequently.
They do.
But, so do other pilots.
You betcha.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I don't see that as being a problem. I did include just this map for everybody to look at, which shows where the Townsend Airport is and where the proposed MOA is. It'd be over on this side over here. So as long as, as long as they stay within the boundaries of the Limestone Hills Training Area, I think that that proposal's not unreasonable. But we'll still express to them that everybody would rather have an MOA than restricted airspace. And we'll see where that goes. I think the other thing that's important to realize too, that this is not final by any means. This is, once this, all the data is gathered, it still has to be sent to the FAA. And the FAA will make that determination of what they want to do. I know in talking with the pilots yesterday, the MOA that was put down in eastern Montana, they discovered that part of it was over like some, the National, the Custer Battlefield and some things like that. So they had to make some adjustments, and I think that they're willing to do that. So this is just the initial phase. It's a great opportunity for us to present our comments. And I think that's what they're asking to do, and that's what we're proposing to do. So, anything else?
I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Okay. Laura, do you have anything?
I do.
Okay.
This was brought to our attention probably two or three years ago at the Elkhorn Restoration Committee. A pilot had heard about it, and then I took it to the airport board. And at that point, there was discussion, obviously there was no decision because we had nothing solid yet from DOD on that. So since it's come up again, it isn't a surprise. But a couple of preliminary discussions, sounds like some of the issues have been addressed. But I would suggest strongly that there be information in writing. So the restrictive airspace, I think it needs to be in writing that it's okay to fly that area, but there is permission required. And unless there's a reasonable reason to deny permission, then that will be granted. That way, it gives our pilots the reassurance they need that they are not losing that space. And I think we also have to keep in mind, if they're trying to avoid flying over Townsend, there's a reason for that, and I honor their being that aware of their surroundings. Let's not tunnel them into having to do something that they have previously thought was not the right way they wanted to go. So I would just suggest that we ensure that we have it in writing so that everybody knows exactly what they are allowed to do, and we can deal with anything that they're not allowed to do.
Sure. And I think something too that should be mentioned is if this is approved and they do make it an MOA or restricted area, it will show up on all the aeronautical charts, and it will also show up on the GPS. So as the pilots are flying, they will be aware of that. Also, the notices to airmen, that's a responsibility of every pilot to check their notices before they depart their, where they leave to see if there is, if that area is hot or cold. So, but we will, we'll include that language to ensure that. Anything else? Okay. Thanks, you guys. Next was the loss of communications at the dispatch center. Mike Meyer is attending a online course. He has a break around 10:30. So let's move that to the end of our discussion and give him an opportunity to come and talk about what has taken place there. And it sounds like that problem has been solved, but we'll let him talk about it. I guess let's go ahead and move on to our Sanitarian and Planning Assistant and the Finance Assistant staff position evaluation. So Debbie and Michelle have given us copies of those job descriptions. And I guess, Michelle, I'll just kind of let you maybe lead the discussion a little bit. I guess part of, part of, part of our discussion is, is we, since it does affect two positions, and we did, we did talk with Helen yesterday to see if she would be interested in staying with Broadwater County, if she could receive more hours. She indicated that she would. And I guess that's why we'll have Debbie and Michelle talk about if we did something like that, how we could do that, and what the impact on the budget would be.
Well, right now, the position that Leona had that is now vacant was 36 hours a week. And then Helen's, or the Sanitarian and Planning position was 30, or 29 hours a week. So in order to increase the position, the Sanitarian Planning Assistant position, to a full-time position of 40 hours a week and not have a net increase to the budget, then we would have to do a corresponding decrease to the Office Assistant for the Finance and Commission. We can do that now that the position is vacant and make those changes before we advertise it. So now is actually a good opportunity to do that, if that's what we want to do.
Okay.
I think, from talking to Debbie, I think that that's something that we would be open to in, for our department. Because a lot of what was being done with the hours that was attributed to our Office Assistant position was a lot of work for other departments anyway, and not a lot for ours. So we were really getting the benefit of those hours anyway.
Okay.
So if we could get more dedicated hours for our, for our office, just our department, and not be being pulled in a bunch of different directions, having less hours for that position overall won't really affect us that much. And I think we could, we could do that pretty easy. And we would like to make, you know, some, some changes with what we look at maybe making a few changes with the duties that we would have that person do because it being a new position, brand new, we'd never had it before. We just kind of did the best we could with, you know, what we thought it should be. And then after you have it for a while, there's always things that you can go, oh, I think it'd be better if this, and so...
We needed a way to assess it better because we've been without a clerk for so long.
Right. Well, and I think maybe this time period that we have had now kind of gave us an opportunity to really see how that...
To tweak things a little bit, to fit each position to what our needs and similar duties based on the positions. Yeah.
Okay.
And then it seems like, you know, with the growth that we're seeing in the county, you know, Sanitarian and Planning seems to be where that hits first as far as like workload.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it would, it would make sense that hours would need to be increased for those two departments to help with, to help you guys deal with everything that's coming in. And ours is just, I mean, it's always busy. And I imagine probably sometime fairly soon, we'll probably see even more of a workload because I think we'll probably, we have a lot of grants that we're getting. There's a lot of reporting requirements. There, I mean, all of the stuff with COVID, we don't know with the national legislature how that's going to affect. But that's more of a, maybe down the road a little bit.
Sure.
Where I think the immediate need is more in the Sanitarian and Planning offices to help keep things moving in the county, you know, because that's where everything starts there.
Yeah, and I'm finding I'm having to spend more time on my side as the finance officer, helping departments, the financial side with their grants. I had a call yesterday from WIN and the COPS grant, and he's like, I didn't know there was reporting requirements. And so now they're finding some things out that we're like, uh-oh, we gotta backtrack and catch up on. Talking about financial administrator, I wasn't getting any, well, I did find an email in my spam that had access, and it turns out that the ASAP that like Jessica uses for her BLM stuff that we've been trying to get coordinated with me to access, and it's not working. They're migrating that and the SAMs, which governs all the access to getting funding from grants for us. They're merging some of those requests into one more streamlined program requesting the money. So it's in a more convenient access, and they're calling it just grants or something like that. To access, well, there's a lot involved in getting this access to setting up permissions. There's entity administrators. I spent the better part of yesterday afternoon researching, trying to figure out what to do with all that. And without knowing enough with the COPS grant, I have to catch up with Brandon and WIN now. So we can say, okay, we need to backtrack a little bit here because they worked on the application side. I know we listed me as the finance side, but we're scrambling, where did we not get our notifications and all this? So that's, I'm finding those things are taking more time and trying to keep up with Teresa and her health grants, COVID grants, making sure that we're in compliance with those. It's a lot more intense reading and assessing and comprehending than it is just busy work, like filling in forms for the audit stuff. So having somebody to do this, the more mundane things, the copying, the scanning, the data entries, paperwork entering for the new hire type stuff, I think is going to be important.
Sure.
Where we didn't get a chance for that.
Yeah, so I think maybe if, if you guys, if it works for you to reduce those hours, that there's probably maybe some of those duties that we would maybe shift over to Helen, since she's going to be a full-time employee. And I think maybe life, taking care of some of the day livestream type meetings would, because Helen actually does those anyway with the Board of Health and Planning.
She's already there taking minutes.
Yeah, she's taking minutes, so she could be there to do the livestream as well. She's done it in the past, and she's very good at it. So I don't think it would be a hard lift for her to take care of our Commissioners livestream, Board of Health, Planning, and the Trust Board meetings, those are the ones during the day.
Right. Well, and I don't think it's, it's kind of inefficient to have two people, one doing live streaming, one doing minutes. Because there's not a lot of stuff after you get it going, right?
Yeah.
To do with the live streaming. So if you have two distinct people doing that, it's pretty inefficient, you know?
Yeah.
Turn the stream on a little bit.
And the only one of those livestreams that would be weekly would be our Commissioner meeting. So the other ones are only once a month. That's not too bad. So like for you guys, your position, so if they continue to do the mail, maybe a little bit of work that they do for us as the Commission, mostly it's just filing.
Mostly filing, which kind of ties...
A lot of what we do in our office is directly related to what you do. So it's kind of a good thing to have that in the same, one person doing that. Because it's actually helped for us a lot of times, I think.
Because then I know where some of those documentation and notes are, so we're not keeping two sets.
Sure.
You're keeping a set, and I'm keeping a set because I need to refer back to it, whether it be for your audit or budget or other references for funding or questions. It, I think there's some redundancy filing.
Sure. And would that person still be able to do, I think, there'd be maybe four board meetings in the evening throughout the month?
I think they could be...
We would just have to coordinate.
Just schedule their time.
Coordinate their time, yeah.
But I think because it's, you look at it over the course of a month, you know, it might be four or five hours of time outside of normal working hours. So I think we could probably dot it on.
So long as we know there's a meeting, okay, they're not here today, they're tonight. So don't dump on them and expect them to get it done, or let them plan for tomorrow.
Or they have to leave early or whatever, go to their schedule to make it work.
Sure.
Yeah.
Good. All right, good. I mean, I like that idea. Ultimately, the goal is that we can retain a, retain Helen. She's a great employee. I would really like to see if we can do that. And if she's agreeable to that, I guess we can present that to her. But I think this is a great option for us at this point.
Well, and originally, when we advertised for this position, it was, wasn't it 32 hours?
Yeah.
Or 36 hours?
I think it was 32.
32, and she'd requested less. But the work is certainly there, I mean, you know, between planning, addressing, Sanitarian.
That's what I'm thinking, you know.
I mean, I could definitely give her more work if she had more time.
Right. And I see your workload increasing, Nicole, and I really think that you could use that help.
Oh, yes, I would appreciate the help.
And, yeah, and our Sanitarian as well. So I think this is a good option, and it doesn't impact our budget.
Right.
You know, and if we, as we go through here for the next few months, if we make these changes, if, you know, in March or April, it looks like, you know, things are increasing, whatever, more for us, and it's hard for us to still keep up, there's even, you know, increasing more, then that's something we could look at going into next budget season, possibly increasing to make two full-time positions instead of just one. But we're just trying to keep it from impacting the budget that we already set. This is a way to do that, so we're not...
Well, with taking the 29 hours a week and the 36 hours a week, that's actually a total of 65. But if we drop ours down to 20 and Sanitarian up to 40, we're saving five hours.
Yeah, 25 would be enough.
25, okay. Then it would break even.
Yeah, it's a break even, that's why we don't put that.
All right, good. And, you know, I guess I have a habit of putting people's names and positions, and I shouldn't do that, but it just so happens. So I need, I probably should speak to the position itself, but maybe not the person, but...
And then if, you know, if that position becomes vacant, and Helen decides to leave, then that's something that we might have to even reevaluate further, you know? But right now, it would just be basically being hours added, doing the same duties as she's really doing now.
Right.
So we could do that. We wouldn't have to advertise or reopen the position. We could just add those hours to her if, you know...
Okay. All right, good. Mike, what do you think?
Well, I think that that's all a good idea. I think the one issue that we have right now is that we have people in positions that we're basically overloading them, and they're running all over the place, so they're not really getting anything done anywhere. Especially with finance, I think that you need to have that person in there pretty much full-time instead of running and doing minutes and stuff like that. But if they can do the nighttime minutes, I'm fine with that, and then have Helen do the daytime minutes, the livestream stuff. And then I think everything would get, would be a lot more efficient. Because originally, I thought that you could take this and make it a 140-hour position, but you'd be in the same position we are right now. You just still have one person running all over the place, and nothing's getting accomplished. So I think that both of those positions need to be filled. And I think giving Helen 40 hours is a good idea. She seems to be pretty good at everything that she does, and she's willing to do things for you. As far as the assistant goes, I think that that assistant in finance is going to have to be limited to the assistants in finance. And maybe, maybe some other small duties that may have to do for the Commissioner or something like that. But I think it needs to be in the finance office physically all the time.
I agree.
And the other, and the other part of that too is it'll give Debbie and Michelle a little bit of a a break on their overload because they're, when it comes to payroll day, and then when it becomes audit day, they're working all the time, all the time. I mean, they're in there late and everything, so at least we can get them a little bit of a break in that part of it.
Okay. All right.
Because, you know, like even Bob said, if they fail, we fail. And if we fail, that affects our ability for grants and our financial stability in people's eyes if we look like we're not able to meet a deadline and, hmm, what else aren't they doing? And so those are really important. When I first took the position over, I had no idea the importance. But as I've gone, it's a big thing. It's a big thing. You see the impact.
Well, you know, I'll have to say, you know, when we created that position and we only came in and did all that filing and all that stuff that you guys... we only came in and did all that filing and all that stuff that you guys were, I mean, that was awesome.
Yeah.
I mean, that was, that was really great.
Trying to keep up on it.
Yeah, really great to see that happen. And I know that helped you guys out a lot.
It did. Gave us a boost.
All right, cool. Laura, what are your comments?
I have a question for clarification and then a couple of comments. Who, which physician is it that's going to do the night board meetings?
It would be our office assistant position.
One thing to keep in mind is when that position was created and as these changes slowly came about, it was during COVID. We have not had a month of standard extra, extra board meetings. And what I mean by that is I think every single one of us commissioners has sat in as a liaison with three-hour meetings, two-hour meetings, and of multiple, multiple hour meetings per week. I remember many weeks where I didn't get home a single night before eight o'clock because I was attending board meetings. So as we get back into normal, those meetings are going to become more frequent and longer. And I can see where your assistant, if that is their job, could be using up their entire twenty-five hours or very close to it in those nighttime meetings. So I think, I think we'd either be wise to reevaluate which position does those ancillary board meetings and either be prepared for more hours or have a contingent planned. We just haven't seen that reality that we know from our past in our recent presence.
Yeah, that's a good point. And I think maybe as we start moving into our new budget year after the first of the year, that would be an opportunity for us to reevaluate that position and and make those changes. So thanks for that.
Absolutely. My comments are just a few small ones. The job descriptions do need to be updated.
Yes, yes.
They're not big, but we are talking about some changes. And some of the extra duties that were laid on both positions were never in the job descriptions because they happened after those folks were hired. So a general job description update would be important. And we know that from Gregory, Vania and Mako. So we need to follow what is required of us. I think keeping in mind that any change that we do with any department for any reason at any time is fluid. As we get more information, being open to that and changing as we need to to address issues, to address time constraints, to address finances, that needs to be understood at the beginning going in, which sounds like it is, but I think that's important to say for the commission. And the last comment is grants. Grants are pursued by commissioners all over the state, all over the country because we're able to provide services for the public who believe that is not there. What that means is we can provide services without taxing our citizens. And that's a good thing from their perspective. The reality is reporting is a requirement of using somebody else's money. Once you get into the habit, and and by you, I mean the department head, not our finance officer or any of her staff, you can certainly help, but the reporting is, should not be their responsibility. But as you get into a habit, reporting, it becomes easier and easier and you understand what you need to track on the front end to be ready for quarter. Teresa, Mike have both learned that, Mike on his too, before he retired, have all learned that in space from what they do and how they find so much of the stuff that they do. So I appreciate very much, Debbie, how much you work with those folks on their grants. And I can see where that will also rule in the future, where there's an opportunity for that with your new assistant perhaps. But again, the responsibility has to be on the department heads because they're the ones who are the boots on the ground with those grants and how they're working and what they're doing with them. Those are all my comments. I really appreciate Debbie, Michelle and Nicole's input with these positions because you guys, again, have gone to the frontline, you know the most. And having this discussion, I think, is invaluable. So thank you very much.
All right, good. So what do you guys think? You want to move forward with that plan?
I would, yes.
Okay.
And we can get, I mean, we can work on job description, updating job descriptions, and then we can forward those to you, you know, too. With kind of what we've discussed here and stuff.
Okay. All right, good. Do we want to have this as an agenda item next Monday to make a decision on?
I would think so. Might as well get the process going. We're down a person.
All right.
I agree. At this point, though, the agenda must be posted because we are beyond our deadline. But it needs to be at the post office and the school to follow that part of our resolution.
Yep. Okay. We'll do that. Mike is here just in time. We'll go ahead and move on to the loss communication at the dispatch center. Mike, and I know that a lot of those issues have been solved, but go ahead and let us know what's going on and how that's been corrected.
Okay. Mike, what about everybody? Well, we have the whole computers for the sheriff station, sheriff department will switch over if there's an outage now to CenturyLink. If we have an outage with Blackfoot. And I'm working on the two non-recorded lines right now with Blackfoot to have a switch over so that they switch over too. Because right now nine-one-one and the recorded lines are already on CenturyLink.
Okay. So if there is a failure like we experienced a couple of weeks ago, all the dispatch computers will switch over, right?
All the dispatch computers, the deputies' computers, everybody's computers and the whole, the whole server, actually the whole server that that supplies to all the computers in the sheriff's department will switch over.
Okay. And they will have, the nine-one-one lines, that's a separate issue. But the the non-recorded lines, I think that you said that that would be.
Yeah, they're working on that one right now.
They're working on that one.
Yeah. And it already has a switch over failsafe on the nine-one-one lines before. Just now we have, now we have, all the computers are all taken care of in the sheriff's department. Now we're just working on the non-recorded lines to figure out how to do a switch over.
All right, good. Well, I I think maybe also it's important to know that those lines were in place and they just, we didn't forget about them. They were in place, they just didn't get connected, so.
Yeah, they didn't get programmed.
They didn't program, okay.
Yeah, they were all connected.
All right, perfect. Anything else?
That's about it.
You guys have any questions?
Do all, so is the computer in the jail on CenturyLink? Now, is it also backed up by Blackfoot? Do we have a backup or?
It's on Blackfoot and then it's backed, then it's backed up by CenturyLink if there's a power, if there's a problem with Blackfoot. And we had that actually in place about a year ago.
Yeah.
It just didn't get programmed. A lot of stuff going on the last year.
Yeah, there's been a few things happen, hasn't there? Laura, did you have any questions for Mike?
Nope, I just think he's done an amazing job with a tough situation from the beginning.
All right, great. Mike, thanks for taking time to come over here. Now you can go back to school.
Thank you.
You thought learning was over, didn't you?
I did.
Sorry about that. Okay, good. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to our Silos Recreation Management contract. And I guess as information, I guess for informational purposes, the RFQ has been sent out. And see if I can remember, it's gone out to Bozeman, Helena, Beute and Missoula, correct?
And our local paper.
And our local paper. And then we're waiting on the BOR to let us know if we can post it on their site, which we hope that they will let us do that. Any other suggestions? Places where we could post this? Well, okay.
The Mako website? Or something like that?
Something like that.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, that's a thought.
I've never paid attention.
We could, I could ask Chantel, I guess, and see if that's something that they they do.
I know they advertise for a lot of engineering firms and things in their newsletters, but I didn't know if that would be something.
Sure. Okay. Okay.
Because then that would go to all the counties.
Yeah.
If they do.
Okay. So I guess since that has taken place, then what we need to do is start working on the RFP portion and the contract. And I guess, you know, we have, we have reached out to Great West Engineering. They said that they could help us with the RFP portion of it as well. And I guess that's where I would like to go with this. I mean, I'm not an expert at creating an RFP. And they have the staff and resources to do that. I would like to rely on them to help us create that RFP. What's your thoughts?
I would agree with that. I think it's, you know, that's what they do. We hired them for an on-call engineer. They have people to put us through the RFP process. If you look at some of these other RFPs that are out there, they're very well done and they pretty well express right to the point of what you want. And that's what we need to have in our, in our RFP. And I think with an outside look of eyes on there, they could see some things that we probably do and don't want to do. And I think that'd be very much to our advantage.
Sure. Well, you know, this, you know, this is, it's kind of, we're at a little bit of a, we have an opportunity to create something that will benefit us down the road. And, you know, my crystal ball's not as clear as it should be sometimes. And I know as we move into the development of the Silos Master Plan and our relationship with the Bureau of Reclamation, I think it's important for us to have the correct document at this time moving forward so that we're in harmony with the, with the Bureau of Reclamation and what they require and also what our requirement is going to be to manage that area. So I guess that's all I have. Laura, what's your, what's your thoughts?
I am a hundred percent in agreement. Great West has already helped us with both the RFQ and the RFP, but I think we need to take a step back with the RFP and give it to them in total. I think we need to be out of it other than being a resource for them. I would like to see them actually go to the Silos and see what the situation is out there. And then I'd like to have them go ahead and draft something completely separate using just their expertise. I don't think it's necessarily what we want. I think it's what we need that they can focus on far better than we can. I also think that they can take in history, which is vitally important, but also compare that and marry that with the master plan, with a vision on the future and how, I think they can analyze in a way that maybe nobody else can, how important to our economic viability as counties the Silos Recreation Area is. I think they can also work with the OR and play by how important that relationship is for our economy. So I am absolutely one hundred percent in agreement. I think we need to just totally start the RFP from scratch letting Great West Engineering do that. The other thing, yeah, I guess that's all I have to say on that particular topic.
Okay.
I'm one hundred percent on board. I do think it should be added to the agenda.
Okay.
And it would need to be posted anyway at this point.
Yep.
So we can certainly have the forty-eight hours.
Okay, good. All right, thank you for that. I think that's, that we're doing the right thing. So I guess then let's talk about, you know, the contract. And I guess I'm kind of, I'm kind of the same way. I'm, I'm not a contract writer and Great West Engineering made the suggestion. They gave us three different attorneys that they felt would do a good job for us. We asked Cory's recommendation. He recommended one attorney and that Steve
Ward.
Huh?
Ward.
Steven, Steve Ward? Oh, Steve Wade.
Steve Wade.
Steve Wade. And, you know, you know, I realize this probably will cost us a little bit of money to do this, but I think having having a good contract is extremely important for since we put this much work into this process already, we need to have a, the contract to back it up. So I guess that was my suggestion to, if we could do that. What are you guys' thoughts?
I would, I would agree with having this gentleman or anyone else that we can think that we can come up with to have him do the contract because the problem with the contract is that when you combine the contract with the master plan, there's just a whole bunch of stuff there to make sure that you see. And I think it's another set of outside eyes would be a little more thorough and probably brush up a little bit more on on those points that are points of contention. And also be able to stay within the compliance of what the BOR has. Like I said, we, we got hit with so much stuff this week and I don't see it slowing down that I don't know how, where we would get the time to sit down and do this contract justice.
I guess along with that, I mean, surely this contract will, this person that we decide to, to contract with, we will be given our input as well as, as we move along in the process. So it's, you know, it's not just something that's going to be developed by someone else. I mean, I, I think it's important for us to contribute where we can. So what do you think, Laura?
I also agree one hundred percent. The, a couple of things that I think need to be known before walking into this call is one, the contract we have was drafted by new attorneys. And so a new attorney is going to have some skeleton to work on. John Flann was known to be one of the, if not the best county attorney in the state. We were blessed to have him as our county attorney. Now, with his, his contract, oftentimes what he said is that you keep things simple. They don't need to have a lot of legalese because then your people who are trying to work the contracts can't understand them. So I think as long as we, we maintain that integrity with the contract, it's important. So the, the who? I think we need to leave that to Great West. I think we need the attorney that they have on staff who is the recreation expert. Not just somebody who somebody knows from, you know, from a coffee klatch. We need somebody who's a recreation expert. And two, Great West will know the workload of their staff more than anybody else. So I think we need to just let Great West know that we need an attorney, not necessarily who that attorney is. The third point that I think is important for us to keep in mind again is the long view. So we are going to be looking at, yes, let me correct that, you guys are going to be looking at a new BOR contract. That's a good two-year process. It's due up in 2013, so you're going to be starting that in the next couple of months. Having an attorney work through that contract, I think, is imperative. I don't think that the county has been well represented simply because it is too complicated. There's too many legalese because it's federal. uh, because it's federal. And I think it just went, I just don't think it's been a good contract. So having somebody, again, who's a recreation expert, who will be working on that contract as well as the management contract and can actually marry the two together constructively, I think will be a huge benefit.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's a good point. Thank you. All right. Um, can we add that to the agenda as well? You guys okay with that?
I would say yes.
Absolutely. As long as it is posted.
Okay. All right. Good. Um, anything else, you guys? Anything else that that has come up that we need to discuss?
Well, we have more on the silos.
We do? With, with, uh, okay.
Yeah. So we have the RFQ out and we need to, um, have a team go through those when they come in.
Oh, yeah. You're right. Mm-hmm.
So I think we should establish who that team is. And one of the things that was brought up last week was taking the commissioners out of any kind of supervisory role with the contract, which I will say again, I disagree with. I think a commissioner has to be involved with the supervision of that contract. But the idea was to put a staffer, one of our department heads, responsible for the contract and working with the manager and overseeing all the different facets of that, um, as an employee. So we do need somebody who perhaps will have some contract training. But, um, aside from that, the, the three people that could potentially find themselves in that role, um, and this would also be something to run by an attorney because I think they might direct us to the commission, uh, being responsible anyway. The three, uh, people that would probably find themselves in that role would be the county planner, uh, basically, uh, because of the community development aspect of that job and, and the job title. Two would be the public works supervisor. And from past, public works has been intimately involved with the silos, uh, garbage collection, road work. And third is our maintenance supervisor and his work with the gazebo's last year and referring so much to him with the tours of the grounds, et cetera. So I would like to request that our team of reviewers include Nicole, Mike, and Joshua.
Yeah, okay.
And perhaps our attorney from Great West.
I'd also like to throw Al Christopherson in there. Yeah, he's, he's, he seems to be, he's pretty good about, he's got a good group out there and I think that they deserve representation.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I don't know how many we want to go to, but I think that it would be, uh, beneficial for the trust board to be involved in some way. That's all I would have.
Okay. Um.
Well, Al is on the trust board, so he could fill both roles.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How about?
If you get too many people involved, you're going to have, um, it, it gets a little bit more complicated. It still works, but especially when you're interviewing people. To have too many people interviewing, you ramp up the stress and then you don't get to the real need of what you need to know.
Um, I think, uh, Dan Gallagher expressed, uh, a desire to help us as well.
That'd probably be a good idea.
You got ten people on this team, potentially.
Mm-hmm.
Now, this is for just the RFQ part of it, not the RFP.
Well, I, I would think that you probably would use the same team.
Same team.
Yeah. You know, to narrow the field and then once that comes back, then to review the proposals and help make the selection. Um, I guess, do it, or is, I'm not sure who, who you're thinking, but I would imagine that our engineer would would probably be on there, would they not?
Great, well, yeah, because I think a lot of things are going to have to go through them.
Great West representative, whoever that's going to be. Okay. Any other suggestions?
I'm wondering, I hate to add any more people, but if we have the trust board, maybe we should also have the rec board. Since silos is recreation. I can reach out to the rec board and see if anyone would have an interest.
Okay.
So now we're at ten if we include all three commissioners. And do we need finance because of the financial impact that silos has to our community?
Yeah.
So we could, we could, we could carry it away here. So, no, I, I think, uh, I think ten is more.
Yeah.
I think ten is a, uh, for anybody interviewing, I think ten is incredibly intimidating.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm joking about finance.
Okay.
Debbie and Michelle.
Um, we'll just have them listen in. How's that? Uh, okay.
Yeah, what is the deadline for the RFQ?
Uh, RFQ is December sixteenth at four P M. So, yeah, uh, it is important to have our team identified and ready to go. So when, when we receive them, we can get that going and, and keep this process moving as quickly as possible, so.
Um, Commissioner, I would like to also suggest we send this RFQ to, um, RPA. They have developed a silos website through this master plan.
You know what? That's probably a great place.
And so I think if someone is interested in the master plan, they're already paying attention to that website.
Sure.
And it's free to advertise there.
All right. Good suggestion. Thanks, Nicole.
Can I send it to them?
Yeah, you can. You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Updated, absolutely.
Okay. Okay. All right. Well, I think that's probably all we, for our team, huh? Are you guys good with that right there?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Laura?
Nope.
Okay. Anything else from you guys? No? Debbie? Any questions about the process? You're going to be involved in it, maybe? Possibly. I don't know. Okay. All right.
Real learn-as-you-go type of thing?
Yeah. All right. Very good. Thank you, everybody. Uh, it's been a great meeting and we got a lot accomplished, so we're adjourned.